Call to order. The common council meeting of Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I will ask clerk to please call the roll.
Arrington McKinney.
Present.
Arrington McKinney is here. Heck.
Here.
Heck is here. Lemmer.
Here.
Lemmer is here. Vice President Martin.
Here.
Martin is here. Miyazi is excused. Verveer.
Here.
Verveer is here. Vidiver.
Present.
Vidiver is here. Wihalia. And Wihalia. President Abbas.
Present.
President Abbas is here. Alvarez.
Here.
Alvarez is here. Benford.
Present.
Benford is here. Bennett is excused. Carter.
Present.
Carter is here. Conklin.
Present.
Conklin is here. Curry.
Here.
Curry is here. Evers.
Here.
Evers is here. Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Figueroa Cole is here. Foster.
Here.
Foster is here. Furman.
Present.
Furman is here. Halverson.
Present.
Halverson is here. Wihalia. Wihalia. Wihalia is here. Madam Mayor, we have Gorm.
Thank you very much. May we have the meeting instructions, please?
Yes. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I'll just note, as usual, that I hope that folks can keep in mind that we're all here for the same purpose, to try and do the business of the city and to refrain from using profanity that goes for staff, members of the council, and the public as well. I'll also note that it is my belief that on item forty-four regarding body-worn cameras, the intent is to make a motion to refer. If there are any members of the public that are here wishing to speak to that item, I just want folks to know in all transparency that that is the motion. It's not necessarily the vote of the council, but that will be the motion when we get to that. We will start then with suspension of the rules. President Abbas.
Motion to suspend of the rules. Suspend rule two-point-zero-four, Order of Businesses, two-point-zero-five, Introduction of Businesses, two-point-two-five, Ordinances, and two-point-two-five resolution for items so designated on the agenda.
Second. It's moved in seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. We have no petitions or communications. We do have early public comment. Beginning with Megan Spielbauer Sandate of District Four. Just a reminder, please tell us what item you're registered on before you start your comment.
Hi, my name is Megan. I did not expect to be the first person to go. I'm here in opposition of item number forty-four, which I understand is potentially going to be referred, but I just wanted to say that I, based on the meeting with the Public Safety Review Committee, that's the correct order of that acronym, I believe that they recommended to put it on file, and I want to say that I think that implementing the body-worn camera pilot, or body, yeah, the pilot program would be a mistake on the city's part. I can speak for myself in saying that I don't, I'm not comfortable with increased police and state surveillance growing in Madison. I also don't believe that body-worn cameras are the way to police accountability. We've seen, the research has shown and people have pointed out, that body-worn cameras don't necessarily lead to more police accountability, that there's definite bias in that type of recording, and that creating a community, a safer community, I don't believe comes from investing in police and state surveillance. I think it comes from investing in different social services, looking into public health, looking into education, amongst others. I also just want to say that I feel like this pilot program, while a lot of people are discussing how this is again going to lead to a greater police accountability, it still doesn't talk about racism in policing, and it doesn't really do anything to address that. And I think we've seen that time and time again, that a lot of carceral and police policies have grown since the nineteen-sixties that have this attitude of colorblindness, or that they don't see race, and that's somehow going to, that's somehow administrative perfection, if we can somehow, I put this in scare quotes, perfect policing, that it's somehow going to get rid of the racism that exists in there. And I want to point out that has not worked, and it will not work. Body-worn cameras aren't going to be the solution, and so I think it's a poor use of city funds. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our only early public comment. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you. And we will go on, perhaps slightly slowly, to the presentation of the consent agenda, since we lack four minutes to forty-five. But President Abbas, the consent agenda.
Perfect. So I have to spend four minutes?
I think we can probably manage, Alder.
That's right. At this time, a consent agenda will be moved, with the recommended action listed for each item except, number one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, number two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote, and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three, items which alter person have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda item number two to five are public hearing items. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority votes item will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call exclusion is requested. Legislative, agenda item number twenty-seven, legislative file number six-eight-six-zero-zero substitute, amending the two thousand and twenty-two adopted capital budget of street division to appropriate one hundred fifty-three thousand of two thousand and nineteen carry-forward funds, fifteen vote requires. Agenda item number thirty, legislative file number six-eight-six-five-nine, authorizing an agreement with Dean County along with the land purchase, land division, and an accession of approximately eight acres of land located in the town of Verona to extend the Ice Age National Scenic Trail, and amending the box division capital budget to include funding for the acquisition, requires fifteen votes. Agenda item number thirty-one, legislative file number six-eight-six-six-zero, authorizing the acceptance of a grant for two hundred fifty thousand for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant Program, authorizing contracts with the WEDC and Midwest Go-Group LLC for the use of funds, and amending the two thousand and twenty-two adopted operating budget for Economic Development Division Office of Business Resource Purchase Services, required fifteen vote. Agenda item number thirty-four, legislative file number six-eight-eight-five-two, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Snow Water Utility Capital Budget to allow for the acceptance of a two hundred forty-nine thousand grand for Wisconsin DNR, require fifteen votes. Agenda item number forty, legislative file number six-nine-zero-five-nine, recreating one point-six FTE graphic technician position, and one FTE customer service representative position into one FTE graphic technician position, and one, and one point, point-six FTE customer service representation position, amending the twenty-two metro transit operating budget to reflect these changes for a zero change in FTE, require fifteen votes. Agenda item, items part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Agenda item number forty-four, legislative file number six-eight-six-two-five, implementing body-worn camera pilot program, and recommended action is to refer to four nineteen-twenty-two. And the reason of refer is to provide ample time for MPD to organize a public meeting to comply with the City of Madison Surveillance Ordinance. Additional agenda item with recommendation made from the floor, agenda item number twenty, legislative file number six-eight-seven-two-two, amending section three-point-one-to-ten-G-one of Madison General Ordinances to change the application requirements for childcare tuition aid. And recommended, recommended action is approve the substitute version two. Item requested for exclusion is agenda item number eight, legislative file number six-nine-zero-seven-nine, Chief of Police Fourth Quarter Report. Item introduced from the floor for referral. Legislative file number six-nine-three-five-four, resolution approving the scope of services for the Cooperative Enterprise Development Program for two thousand and twenty-two, and authorizing the city to execute a two thousand and twenty-two contract for three hundred thousand dollars with C-Force CS. Recommended action is refer to Finance Committee, January twenty-fourth, and Common Council on February first. The reason for referral to Finance Committee is Cooperative Enterprise Development Program is included in two thousand and twenty-two Economic Development Division Capital Budget, three hundred thousand dollar expenditure to be vetted by Finance Committee. Next is legislative file number six-nine-three-five-eight, authorizing a three hundred thousand dollar contract with the Wisconsin Women Business Initiative Corporation, WWBIC, for the administration of the Kiva Medicine Program for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four, two hundred thousand Kiva Medicine match funding for Workers Cooperative, fifty thousand Kiva Medicine match funding for other targeted businesses, fifty thousand dollar recommendation, recommended action is refer to Finance Committee, January twenty-fourth, and then Common Council is February first. And the reason for refer to Finance Committee is Wisconsin Women Business Initiative Corporation Kiva Programs requires a three hundred thousand dollar expenditure to be vetted by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. We do have a couple of items that have registrants. So in addition to item eight, we'll also be excluding item twenty-six and item forty-four with the.
Looks like we lost the mayor. President Abbas, do you feel like?
Sure, man. Sure. Okay, I'm, I was not prepared for that, but I will quickly check. Just give me one second. Additional items where we have registrant, and they, they're available to speak is agenda item number nineteen, accepting the two thousand and twenty-one agency annual surveillance technology report. And agenda item number twenty-six, a resolution, and that is excluded, actually. Agenda item number twenty-six is exclusion, which is a resolution to authorize a non-competitive contract with Hufcor Inc. as a sole source provider of air walls, movable partition systems.
My apologies, President Abbas. I'm back. Jim kicked me out.
No worries. I, yes, Madam Mayor, I mentioned about agenda item nineteen, no, twenty-six, which is excluded, and you can take it there.
Thank you. So yes, twenty-six and forty-four. Are there any additional exclusions?
Mayor, did you say eight?
Eight, twenty-six, and forty-four are excluded.
Okay, thank you.
At this point. Are there any additional exclusions? Seeing none, are there any disclosures or recusals? Alder Figueroa Cole?
I'm sorry, I thought that, because I last said nineteen also, I don't have them listed for me. Was nineteen needed to come out?
No, there's a registrant out there not wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, that's all right.
Thank you, Alder. All right, not seeing any disclosures or recusals. Then, just to recap, items two through five are public hearings. Items twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-four, forty are extra majority items. Additional recommendation on twenty is to approve the substitute version two. Items for exclusion are eight, twenty-six, forty-four. Also excluded will be the two items that are introduced from the floor for referral. We'll deal with those at the end. And then I'll note that we do have registrants on the following items. On item nineteen, there are ten in support. On item thirty-one, there is one in support. And on item thirty-five, there is one in support. Are there questions for any of the registrants on items nineteen, thirty-one, or thirty-five? Seeing none, then, that is the motion on the consent agenda. We'll take it as having been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor?
Madam Mayor, I have no objection, but Alder Wihalia is in the attendance. Can I promote her as a panelist, please?
Thank you, President Abbas. She was having connection issues. All right, so let me just mark through what we have dealt with. So I see no objection to the consent agenda, and so we will record that. And we will start with our public hearings, which is the report of the Board of Public Works, item number two, legisstar six-nine-zero-six-four. Open a public hearing on approving planned specifications and a schedule of assessments for Old Middleton Road and Craig Avenue Resurfacing Assessment District two thousand and twenty-one. On item two, we have two registrants wishing to speak. We'll start with Alexander Harding of District Thirteen in opposition, to be followed by Mark Jollicore.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. So my comment is specifically in opposition to the modified option that includes on-street car parking. So my concern is that this car parking sacrifices safety. Firstly, it sacrifices safety and mobility of pedestrians by removing the terrace, which means snow will be piled up on the sidewalk, and there's no alternative sidewalk in the area. I think it also sacrifices the safety of bicyclists on a critical bicycle route by removing the buffer and sandwiching bicyclists between a deadly door zone and a narrow ten-foot travel lane on a bus route. So, and as a side note, an unprotected bicycle lane, which is proposed here, is in direct contradiction with NACTO guidance for safe bicycle facilities on this street. It also speeds up drivers, decreasing safety for all by increasing the width of the street and removing trees, which are proven to calm traffic. I don't think there's a single scenario where it is okay to sacrifice safety for on-street convenient car parking. If you vote to allow the parking here, you're voting that if someone gets hurt due to decreased safety, that is an acceptable price to pay for convenient on-street car parking. Time and time again, the City of Madison has heard from residents that they prioritize safety above all else. It is easy to say that, but it is not easy to implement that. It will be difficult. Prioritizing safety will require sacrifices. Please do not compromise safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registration is Mark Jollicore in opposition of District eleven. Do we have Mark?
Mark, you should, Mark, you should have a prompt to unmute.
Okay, yes. I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So I'm, I own a business in the fifty-three-hundred block of Old Middleton Road, and my concern is, is pretty much opposite of what the last caller said. I would prefer on-street parking for the businesses, and I'm only talking about the fifty-three-hundred block. I have spoken to every other business owner in that area, and everybody's against taking away the parking. There's an alternative option of just, I guess, providing a couple of different parking spots. However, if you were to take the bike lane and move it across the street, which will take, which would be the north side of Old Middleton Road, they, that would be a very easy, convenient way for a biker to not be in danger of either cars' doors opening, or even the driveways that are all on the south side of the road. We have, I, again, I have spoken with all the business owners in that area, and I'm only speaking about the fifty-three-hundred block of Old Middleton Road. The rest of it, I haven't spoken to anybody. However, it's very limited for businesses. There's, when it comes to parking, a lot of the businesses in that area use the street parking. Normally, if anybody's been down there recently, they've probably seen a bunch of construction cars and various other things that are currently, because there is a, a structure being built on the corner of Whitney Way and Old Middleton Road. However, that is not a norm. They do, they do park in the spots currently. However, there was a study being done that was given to us, I think it was at the beginning of November, where there was eighteen parking spots on the street, and thirteen of them during the course of the day were being used. So I guess my question would be, would there be an alternative place that the city would be able to provide for those spots that are currently, on average, being used for the businesses in that, in that area? For customers or employees to park that are being taken away if the bike lanes are going to be put there. Again, I've, I've also attended all these meetings, including the first one, and I'm just hoping that there's a way that somebody will understand what we're trying to do, and trying to keep businesses in that area. If you take away the street parking, potentially it's going to affect the businesses. And realistically, people don't go to get their hair done on their bike. They don't go to the grocery store on their bike, and if they do, they limit their purchases because of.
That's time.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for your time, anyway.
Thank you. We also have Nicholas Davies of District Fifteen in support, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing on item two. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
It's moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to Alder Carter? You're muted, Alder.
I have a question for staff. Is this the right time?
It is. Go ahead.
So I don't know who can answer this question, but when you held these community meetings, did you look at having the bike path on the opposite side? I don't know who's here for that. I don't know who's here for that.
Uh, Alder, there's probably a question for our city engineer Phillips. Or somebody from engineering.
Oh, there he is.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I've got, uh, Fadi Almuz Gonzalez here, and I think he'll be able to answer that, and if not, uh, we'll loop in our traffic engineers.
Good evening. Yes, uh, there wasn't a path being proposed on the south side, uh, to address parking concerns, specifically on the fifty-three-hundred block. Uh, we are proposing to have a sidewalk section, uh, on Ghetto. Uh, basically, that sidewalk section would provide access for, uh, the, the parking, uh, users that can use that section and, and access the, the sidewalk in a safe way. Uh, and also, we're, uh, proposing to have, uh, as, uh, shown on the display, the sidewalk sec, the, the bump in, uh, close to the Merrill Crest intersection in order to accommodate extra on-street parking space. So, and, uh, to address the, the, the question, we denied, uh, showed that any of these options in the public meetings. We did create this option uh, off of the feedback that we received on the two public informational meetings that we held regarding this project.
And then regarding just one additional follow-up, uh, regarding the business district of Old Middleton Road, the fifty-three-hundred block, are those, uh, parking spaces going to be restored?
Uh, after the project is completed, uh, there were, there wouldn't be on-street parking besides the, the sections we are, uh, proposing to have, basically on the specific section where the, uh, curb gets closer, closer to the sidewalk and where there is, uh, currently parking on Ghetto Avenue. Besides that, there wouldn't be any on-street parking.
Okay, and then when you get down to Whitney Way, I know there's development there. Um, is there, um, there's no parking right at that corner? Sometimes that's a blind spot. Whitney and Old Middleton Road.
Yes, the, at, at that specific intersection, if you're talking about the southwest corner, that was recently improved, so we're not planning to do a lot there. We're just matching the, the, the curb where it was placed a couple of months ago.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Vice President Martin, is it a question?
Yes, for staff.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, this is likely for Fadi, but if there is somebody else who can answer, that, that, that's great, too. Um, during the last meeting, we talked about this compromise and the, um, change of the, uh, the width of the, the buffered bike lane from, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, from feet till two feet, and, um, the question that I had that night and would, would like to see answered again tonight is, um, is that a, a, a standard in terms of, uh, traffic engineering, or does any kind of, uh, uh, bicycle safety, um, is that considered a safe, um, width for a bike lane?
Um, I guess the, the concern about safety would have to be addressed by traffic engineering staff. The proposed idea for this section is that there wouldn't be any buffers on the north side. There would be, uh, two buffers on the south side, one separating the travel lane from the bike lane, and the other one would be separating the bike lane from the parking lane on the south side. So, uh, in order to, to accommodate that parking lane, we would be removing the, the north side buffer for a stretch of roughly three hundred feet, and then it would continue out throughout the whole corridor as a three-foot, uh, bike lane.
Uh, thank you. Um, so, uh, I don't know, Director Lynch, or I, I don't, can't see if any, or I haven't seen any, uh, traffic engineering staff on, but is, is.
Traffic Engineer Towers here.
Oh, okay. Um, i- if, if he has an answer about the, the, regarding the safety, um, if, for the, the compromise, um, uh, bike lane width.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Alder Martin. Uh, I apologize that, uh, 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 my connection was better for a moment, so could you repeat those estimations?
I, uh, from what I remember, um, uh, the buffered bike lane, um, was in order to, uh, preserve some of the on-street parking for a small stretch on Old Middleton, uh, part of the buffered bike lane was narrowed from, I believe, three feet to two feet.
Gotcha.
And I was, I, I, you know, that was standard and acceptable in terms of, in safety term.
Okay, thank, thank you for repeating that. Uh, uh, that's a great question. So, uh, generally, uh, you know, the wider buffer we can provide, uh, for bikes, uh, you know, safer, uh, uh, and more comfortable, it is for bicyclists. Uh, you know, especially here, we have, uh, 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 you know, relatively high volume of traffic, uh, about, you know, twelve, twelve thousand, uh, uh, each day, uh, and this is, uh, uh, you know, a critical piece of the bike network. Um, so, yeah, so, uh, you know, the more buffer we can get, uh, the better. Uh, but, uh, uh, two feet, uh, is, uh, um, uh, is up to standard for buffer bike lane.
Thank you. Um, and I, I do have one, um, more question about, uh, the, the particular section that we're talking about in, uh, on Old Middleton, um, is in front of a building, um, that has affordable housing for folks that have, um, issues um, with ability or, or are just, otherwise, uh, physically disabled, and, um, I guess I, I'm just wondering why, or, um, the, the, sorry, I'm gonna start. Also, I apologize, my internet is bad. I'm gonna have to turn off my camera. Hold on a second. My, my apologies, everybody. Um, I hope you can hear me better now. Um, but, uh, the, the reasoning for, for putting a few of these parking spots back in front of this particular spot, which is in front of the United Way, um, Affordable Housing.
Yeah, I might be able to take that if, if you're unaware.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think, um, uh, the owner of that facility, or at least the manager of that facility, um, that, um, houses many differently-able people, um, currently, that, that spot is, you might say, underparked. There's not very much parking uh, for those residents onsite or hardly any at all onsite. And, uh, they do use the street parking, um, and so he had concerns regarding just the ability of, of those residents to access the parking right there. Uh, so it, it ended up becoming kind of a, um, being able to provide, you know, some street parking for, um, residents that, um, in many ways, might be reliant on that and don't have alternate off-site, uh, parking spaces. And so that was, um, part of the reasoning for the, what you, you've been referring to as the compromise solution. Um, and then, um, as far as, uh, perhaps responding to, uh, you know, a previous, um, um, commenter, um, uh, this, you know, provide, this helps our bike network and helps provide a lower-stress, uh, bike facility. Uh, it doesn't provide the lowest-stress facility, which would be, you know, a separated pathway that has a curb type of protection, but we often can't get the lowest-type of stress bikeway, uh, so we try and improve or maybe decrease the stress level of bikeways wherever we can. And I feel like, uh, engineering staff along with, uh, Yang staff did a good job of, of developing a, a solution that provides a good facility, uh, yet kind of acknowledges some specific, uh, auto-parking needs on the street.
Thank you.
Those were my questions.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Uh, I see no other questions. Um, the motion is to adopt. Is there any discussion? Uh, Alder Furman?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'll just speak about this briefly. Um, so, uh, this obviously is not a full-blown reconstruction. It's just a resurfacing. Um, uh, I am excited about the work engineering, um, uh, and traffic, traffic engineering and engineering did in the design of this project. Um, they really, um, have some interesting ways to, to figure out some street, uh, speed coming, um, as well as improve, um, bicycle access, uh, on an important path. Um, I did want to comment a little bit about, uh, the fifty-three-hundred block since it came up in comments, um, and just make it clear, I mean, this, this was discussed multiple times at public hearings, as well as, uh, committee meeting, the committee meetings. Um, tho- those sites, uh, that, that are being talked about, um, with the exception of the, um, Affordable Housing, have a lot of parking onsite, um. Uh, they certainly, obviously, wish they still had the street parking, um, but if you look at those facilities, and you could do, just look at it in Google Maps, and I've walked by it several times a week, um, that there is, there is fairly ample parking that they all have onsite, um, so there's still options. Um, the Affordable Housing, um, uh, change, uh, in front of the Affordable Housing Building, um, was some, uh, something that staff worked up, uh, uh, to try to come up with a safe way, um, to provide, um, access to a very, very unique situation. Um, it's, it's kind of an interesting site in the fact that even if, if you didn't have parking there, um, it's pretty far away for that particular building to have, um, on-street parking due to the block that's right near it actually doesn't have, um, parking for, uh, uh, the, the first part of it, allow parking. Um, so it's, um, uh, not an ideal, um, situation, um, but it's certainly something that city engineering and traffic, uh, engineering, um, looked at to try to figure out a safe alternative, um, and provide, um, uh, you know, really needed, uh, parking for, for a unique building, um, that, uh, as, as you've heard, is Affordable Housing, uh, for people with disabilities. Um, so, uh, as, and Alder, that, um, has a, a large chunk of this in their, their district, I am supportive of this project and, um, certainly supportive of the change that, uh, Board of Public Works put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I am the other Alder that represents this particular stretch of road. Um, the fifty-three-hundred block is in my district. You know, I, I am, I, I very much understand and, um, uh, the, the future demands on our roads and transportation systems that the city will be experiencing, um, in the next decade, two decades, and beyond. Um, and I'm really appreciative of, uh, city staff, uh, for working on, um, uh, solutions to our transportation issues that, that include, um, more full transportation other than vehicles, specifically, uh, single-occupant vehicles. Uh, encouraging other forms of transportation is obviously going to be really huge for us as, as the city grows, as Dane County grows. Um, and I, I, I absolutely understand the, the, the interest that are in this one particular instance are kind of competing with, um, you know, uh, bike transportation and uh, parking particular for this one particular building. Um, as Alder Furman said, it is a, a specific situation. Um, uh, um, uh, Ma- Matthew Kotsky, I think I'm saying his, his name correctly, who is, um, the, the person who manages, uh, slash facilitates, um, the United Way property that serves as affordable housing for folks with disabilities, um, mentioned not only the point that Alder Furman mentioned about, um, potential on-street parking being far away um, and, and, uh, too far for folks that have issues with mobility, but also to folks who provide services to the residents there. And that having even this small number of, of parking spots is going to be beneficial to those residents that live in that particular building. Um, so I, I really think that this is the, the best compromise. I, I'm really happy um, that city staff was able to work, work on this and come up a solution that, that does, in fact, um, create another east-west bike lane, um, but also provides, uh, some parking uh, for a particular facility, uh, with, again, very, very specific and special needs. So I am supportive of this, uh, this particular, um, item, uh, that is in my district as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. Uh, the motion is to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, we will record that vote. That brings us to item three, which is the report of the Plan Commission. I'll open a public hearing on Legisstar six-eight-six-four-six, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of platted lots in the Acacia Ridge subdivision, uh, including but not limited to properties located at ninety-three oh four through ninety-three thirty-two Tonny Acorn Drive. Uh, and on item three, we have one registrant in support available to answer questions, Brian Munson of District Thirteen, representing Veridian Homes. And let me just refresh to make sure that we don't have anybody else. Uh, all right, seeing no other registrants, are there any questions for our registrants? Seeing no questions, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Item three, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item three. That takes us to item four. I'll open a public hearing on Legisstar six-eight-six-four-seven, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to rezone property at five-eleven South Ingersoll Street. Um, on item four, we have no registrants. I will uh, recess the public hearing on item four. President Abbas?
Move motion to re-refer.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to re-refer this item to the Plan Commission. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. Takes us to item five. I'll open a public hearing on.
Looks like we lost the mayor again.
Oh, I.
Hanging on by a thread tonight. All right. Thanks, President.
Open the public hearing on agenda item number five. Uh, we have three registrants, uh, in support, and they don't wish to speak. Uh, Brian Munson from District Thirteen, uh, Cliff Goddard from District Four, and Christopher Boyce. Uh, District is unknown. Uh, just opening there. S- I'm closing the public hearing. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
Move, uh, 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 adoption with conditions.
Alder Vahili, can you do a second, please? Alder Vahili, can you do second or Alder? Thank you.
Oh, I'm happy to, Mr. President. I'll second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any question for the staff? I don't see any handwaves. Madam Mayor? Back to you.
Thank you. Apparently, everybody is having connection problems tonight.
Alder Carter has question. Do we have question for the staff?
Uh, all right. So questions for staff, uh, Alder Carter?
Yes, I do have a question regarding the um uh MNI currently BMO um building. Uh, I know that the um, the iconic building and what, what is next to it, the addition, used to be Hilldale Bowling Alley back in the day. But um, I hear that the historical um trust was involved in this, and yet the Plan Commission gave permission, approved demolition, if I remember correctly. Can you address that?
Yes. Director Stouter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Alder Furman, the, the Plan Commission did approve the requested demolition. And just to clarify that, that request is not before the council this evening, that the Plan Commission does have the um authority on approving requested demolitions. And so tonight's just the plan development, general development plan rezoning.
Well, okay, thank you very much. Um, just to give a little tidbit to you, Heather Stouter, that when my parents came to this city and was in line to open up an account at MNI Bank, it was just a trailer on a piece of land. And I guarantee you that no one would give their money to, to a bank that's in a trailer. So that was a different time, and it shows you that that's historic, that story's historic in itself. So when it comes back to us, I'll have more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. We should get the Historical Society on that. Um, I just want to make sure, uh, President Abbas, that we closed the public hearing. So if not, uh, okay, good. So that public hearing was closed. You've got a motion on the floor? Yes. Um, are there any other questions for staff? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, that vote is recorded on item five. And that's the end of our public hearing items. So we'll go on to item eight, uh, which is Legislative File six-nine-oh-seven-nine, the Chief of Police Fourth Quarter Report. Um, Alder Figaro Cole, my assumption, uh, in you pulling this off the consent agenda is to receive the report. Is that correct?
I have some questions about the report. Is that, is that possible?
Yep. So what, uh, what we'll do first, uh, President Abbas is, let's just get a, a motion uh to receive the report.
Move motion to receive the report.
Second.
All right. So moved and seconded, and then um we'll eh see if the chief would like to give us an overview, and then we'll take questions. Chief Barnes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, the quarterly report uh follows the same format as um in previous years. Format was established by council prior to me being arrive, arriving. I know there were some concerns about aggregating some of the data and including other things. I think we can certainly do that if it is referred uh to another committee. If there's additional questions, additional information that you need, we can certainly um get that information for you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there questions for the chief on the report? Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief. So I, I do have a, a few questions, not, not major things, but I just want to clarify some of the content, content of the report. So I'm just gonna go down my list here, if you don't mind. Um, there's a session, the section about shots fired. I just wanted, I wanted to clarify a couple of things in there. One is, again, I think it's um, like, we have been talking about data a lot, how important the universal measures are when we're discussing data. So just, I mean, I know it says that on the report that these are incidents that we are talking, not casings. We have people often use, use the cases to make a point of how much shootings there are out there, but just wanted to make, it would be gr- good if you can clarify the difference between the two incidents versus cases, uh, based, based versus casings. And then, then my main question there is, um, the numbers increased on this quarter, and I'm wondering for the incidents that happened at the end of December, do you have a breakup on regards if those shootings were related to the end-of-the-year celebrations versus actual incidents that were more severe than end-of-year um shootings?
Absolutely. Uh, so the first part of your question deals with how we collect data. Um, yes, we do collect shell casings, and then we report those uh in our shots fired report, which is a separate report. Um, I'm sorry. Feel like I'm looking down. Um, the, the second part of that is that uh we use the FBI's IBR reporting, which means that we look at incidents. So that could be one event, but multiple incidents. That could be a, a fight, that's one incident. That could be a, a shooting in the air, that's another incident. And then there could be, you know, reckless driving, that would be another incident. But it's all one event. And so we keep records of each incident. Um, as it relates to shots fired around the New Year's, um, obviously, anything that would happen after midnight would be twenty-twenty-two, but I took the liberty of looking up some of that data. We did have three shots fired called um after midnight, so it doesn't appear that we have um what I would consider celebratory gunfire here in the city, but we did have one incident uh where the officers were actually on scene during what appeared to be celebratory gunfire, and were able to uh take the person into custody who fired that weapon indiscriminately uh without any incident uh in that case. So we had three calls, one at twelve-twelve AM, one at twelve-thirty-four AM, and one at twelve-thirty-six AM. And we were able to, again, make an arrest and recover the weapon that was used in uh one of those celebratory gunfire incidents.
Thank you, Chief. I mean, I, one of the reasons I asked that question is because um that is starting to, to form a trend, to have those celebrations at the end of the year, and, and it becomes really dangerous um very quickly. So, I mean, we had, happening around here, and we had it all over the city this time. And plus, the numbers are high, and I just wanted to kind of, I'm, you know, trying to, to touch base on that. When it comes to the stolen autos um session there, um, what, we know that that's one of the highest categories that we, that we have, that continues to increase. So I just want you to address what, what does MPD, what efforts does MPD is putting in place to, to battle that, that particular um, that particular crime or situation, those trends?
Sure. So stolen autos were, was a, a big part um of our uh twenty-twenty-one summer strategic plan. Uh, we're gonna extend some of that strategic, strategic plan to a citywide and not a district-wide strategic plan in twenty-twenty-two. It's important to note that we were able uh through strategic planning to reduce crime in all areas, with the exception of stolen auto. Um, just to give you some of the breakdown of some of the, the numbers of stolen uh autos, uh, most of those stolen autos uh occurred in vehicles that were either uh left unlocked or left with the keys uh inside of them. And so we, we try to uh teach what we call the crime triangle um revolving um property crime. In other words, what that simply means is, in order for a property crime to occur, three things have to happen at the same time: lack of guardianship, a suitable target, and a motivated offender. And the good news is, by working together, we, we don't need to affect all of them, but if we can affect one of them, we break it down. We can decrease motivation by making good quality arrests and holding people accountable. We can decrease the um suitable targets by encouraging people uh to protect their, their cars, by making sure that the extra key is in a home or in a purse and not left in the vehicle. Now, I'm not saying that every incident um occurred that way, but the majority of those incidents um occurred with uh either a key in proximity or the car being uh left running. Um, as you know, we do not um chase stolen motor vehicles, so for, perhaps, there could be some um thought that if I can just get away or get in that vehicle, you know, I can use it for whatever purposes I want and then leave it. We do recover quite a bit of those vehicles, but um as you mentioned, it would be best to not have them stolen in the first place.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Um, so I'm just gonna keep on going, because I, I do have a few questions, and I hope you give me the little bit of time, Mayor. Um, could you please dig into the assault offenses values? Uh, does that include domestic abuse?
Yeah, so uh interestingly enough, uh, domestic abuse isn't a crime in Wisconsin. It's a enhancer. So the crime would be assault, and so we would have to then look at every assault case to see if the enhancer of domestic assault uh is present. And so we don't have those values aggregated in this report. If that's something that you're interested in, I think we can work with staff to make sure that we, that we have that in there. Um, a lot, as you know, um, those crimes do not have to be reported at the incident. Um, sometimes during follow-up, we find out that the assault was domestic-related, or the incident was domestic-related, and then we include that enhancer at a later time. So it's definitely important to note that some of those numbers would fluctuate if we, through follow-up, found out that it was an enhancer after the report was already submitted to council.
And on the same note of that kind of category of crimes, um, there, we, we all know that there is a, a human trafficking issue in the city, but we either don't talk about it, or we don't, you know, it's just like, almost it feels like it's one of those problems that we keep on, on putting under the rug. So when I look at the numbers under that category, I was surprised to see that they were so low, when I know that there are many agencies outside the MPD that are really focusing on that regard. So how, how can we better keep that topic on the headlines, and how can better collaborate with those agencies and with the city council to tackle an issue that is really plaguing our streets today?
Well, I think we need more help in that regard. Um, prior to my arrival, there was some conversation around adding additional detectives to investigate and uh ensure that we can run operations targeting human trafficking, which um if I take a minute of personal privilege, I think is one of the most disgusting crimes um with, that we have, um, and certainly a crime that there should be zero tolerance. And I'll just, just, I don't feel, um, hope you don't mind me saying that, but we, we, as all police departments, can certainly do better. Currently, we only have one detective that's assigned to follow-up on human trafficking. And we do need more help um in that uh regard as well. Um, and so we're certainly working certain uh operations. I can't really um talk about those locations uh for the safety of those persons involved, but we do uh follow-up on every, every complaint of human trafficking.
So, I mean, there's also on that regard, um, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but there's also the side of, of um, the whole stigma around that, people not reporting it, people scared to come to, to MPD, they go to the other organizations like Daze, Needos, you know, those people that actually, um, I know that you do collaborate with them, but probably not on every case. So I, I, I would like to really try to put some emphasis on, on developing that trust and that um engagement to bring people that, you know, with the different um cultural backgrounds to feel, or, or that are not um like they're undocumented, all these stuff, people that are, that are more the biggest targets, to feel that um confidence on, on being able to come to you guys to get the assistance, and definitely having the support to have, to have, to help them if they do come to you. But again, I was extremely surprised to see that the numbers were in single digits, and I'm thinking like, it doesn't drive with reality. So it really caught my eye on that. And then, oops, sorry, give me a second here. Okay, and then the next question is, um, the, the category for drugs and narcotics. I'm just curious, after the changes that went through last year for the cannabis laws, has that had any impact on, on that particular category?
No, I, I don't think it has. I, I dug into that a little bit today, and most of those are um uh, are, are crimes that we charge either on the city ordinance. Um, and, and usually, we don't see a lot of that. Now, of course, we do have a um, a countywide narcotics team, and they perhaps make up the majority um of those major cases that the officers are working. But I don't think the change in that law has really affected us much.
So, okay, thank you. And um, the, the area where we're talking about um robberies, is that a way that you classify what kind of robberies are we talking about? Is it properties that are highly valued? Is it crimes of need? You know, is people stealing on the grocery store? What, is that it? Is there a subcategory for those?
Yeah, so robbery is a term that's, it's a layman's term that people kind of use for anytime something is taken, but for the purposes of the uh quarterly report, it refers to something that's taken by, from another person by force or intimidation. Uh, and so the two categories that you will be looking at would be what we call strong on robbery, um, or that would be like a purse snatching, or if, or if someone used threats or intimidation to take the property of another, or an on robbery. What you're referring to in your example would, would be a larceny or retail theft, and then if someone has their home broken into, we categorize that as a burglary. Um, but most people, in layman's terms, just kind of use the term robbery, but it's a little bit different um in the report.
Thank you. And I have two more questions, and I, I leave it at that. So the, the, one that also caught my eye was the use of, the increase on use of force. Is that data available on throughout the, this, per district? And is, is it available per, per race or background?
Yes, and I have that, and I can certainly share that with you. You know, the numbers did increase, but if you remember, um, in the twenty-twenty uh quarter, um, we were in a, a virtual uh quarantine, uh, much of downtown, uh, we're, we're not open um around the October time period, things of that nature. So I think it significantly um affected the numbers, and then, of course, the numbers uh rose in twenty-twenty-one. But if you look at the percentages, the percentages are almost the same. In other words, where we're seeing, where we would normally see uh those types of um uses of forces in those districts pretty much remain the same percentage-wise. The only difference is that the number value decreased.
Thank you. And then finally, I also saw a bunch of, a group of category about promotions, and again, the same thing. Do we have a breakup in the promotions when it comes to um people of color, women, um, but multiple backgrounds? You had that breakdown, how are you promoting the, your internal force?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So we promoted um thirty-eight people in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, twenty-three of those were white males for sixty percent. Three were black males for seven percent. Seven were white females for eighteen percent. Three were Hispanic males for seven percent. One Hispanic female and one Asian female. Um, and so, again, in order to be promoted, you know, you have to be on the list, you have to put in for a promotion. We've been doing some modified process, uh, processes, um, and so we normally get more applicants for the modified process. It doesn't mean that the officers are, are, don't want to put in the work to do the assessment, but I think it's great, you know, when officers can put in their resume and have a, um, a, a short process, they can meet with me, uh, talk about their portfolios, talk about how they've contributed to the agency, talk about their personal leadership philosophy, and be on the list. But in order to get promoted, you know, you have to be on the list. And so I talk about that in lineups, I talk about it in meetings, making sure that we have a diver, I have a diverse list of uh applicants to pick from, and encouraging people uh to put in for a promotion.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, that's all the questions I had, and I had, I have a comment, but I, I can't wait if I, if it's not appropriate to me to get it coming now.
Yeah, if, if you could wait, Alder. I believe Alder Carter has questions as well.
Yes, I just have two quick questions, and then the rest of my questions I'll do offline, because we're just accepting the report. But anything that happens at midnight and after will, will be included on the twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Yes, it'll be in quarter one of twenty-twenty-two. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. The other thing that I wanted to ask you is, I see that um the heroin use had gone up um in twenty-twenty-one, I believe it was. I'm trying to get back to that page. Um, overdoses went up. Um, do you, uh, and, you know, I'm not asking for pacifics, but uh, uh, there's a theory that this is related to the COVID. there's a theory that this is related to the COVID and being um shut down for so long. Is is that what you're thinking? Because it did go up quite a bit.
You know, there there's a, you know, a myriad of of reasons uh why I don't deny that there may be some causal relationships there. Um, but you know, as a researcher, I'm a little hesitant to draw correlations without a little bit more uh data. Um, but I I I do think that it's it's been a tough, tough year, and it continues to be um, a tough twelve months uh for people. Um, and so certainly, you know, we we have services that we can offer people, and we do follow up on those cases.
And then just just briefly, when you start start looking at, you mentioned that um, you recover um many of the stolen autos. Do you know if any of these autos end up in chop shops?
Yeah, that's one thing that I looked at when I first got here, and I could not find any evidence that the vehicles were being used in 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 any chop shots. Um, we have um a meeting of the of other chiefs here in Dane County, and we talked about this all the time. And they recover our vehicles. We recover their vehicles. It just seems to be a a crime of opportunity. Um, obviously, you know, if you're in a stolen vehicle, eventually someone's going to see it. Um, but I I do think that with our strategy that we're working on in 2022, you know, we need to make sure that those persons on the other side of the criminal justice system are helping us out as well. Um, when we have um offenders, um, adult and juvenile, by the way, uh, who are repeat offenders, we're not getting the help that we need. And quite frankly, there's times where if you have three cases of stolen cars and you're already out, what does the fourth one mean to you? And so we need to make sure that, you know, we're working together as a criminal justice system here in Dane County on the things that we think are most important to us, on those things that are priorities, and they should be. Uh, anytime anyone picks up a gun with the purpose of hurting someone, we have to be on one accord about that. And we know that we have an issue with stolen cars because eventually, it's not even eventually, it has happened. Uh, someone innocent is going to get hurt, and we have to stand together on this.
Definitely. And and as as an alder, we all have our blogs. Is there anything that we can do to um to say on our blogs to prevent the opportunity of your car being stolen? You mentioned three things, and I I just asked you to bear with me and repeat those three things again.
Sure. Though we call it the crime triangle. And so in order for a property crime to occur, we generally say that three things have to happen at the same time. Uh, one, there has to be a um suitable target. And you can reduce your chances of being a suitable target by, if you're going to leave your car running, at least try to lock it. Um, uh, number two, do not leave your keys in your cars. And do not leave your keys somewhere where it's accessible if someone were to open a garage door. Um, the second thing is a motivated offender. So su- suitable target and motivated offender. You can decrease someone's motivation by ensuring that if they're caught for a crime, there's no revolving door. They're not back out and, you know, doing things again. Um, that's going to hurt our community. And then the last thing is guardianship. Um, you know, the police cannot be everywhere at all time. Crime prevention is absolutely everyone's responsibility. And just to underscore this point, I want to give you some numbers from the last quarter. Other cars that were stolen uh in the last quarter, quarter four, eighty one of those cars had the keys left in the vehicle, and forty nine of those cars were left running. If we just took out the forty nine that were left unattended and running, our numbers would decrease tremendously. If we just took half of the keys that were left inside the vehicles, um, our numbers would decrease um easily. And the way you kind of think about it is think about it from the standpoint is what am I doing to prevent the next crime? And because you do not want your vehicle to be associated with a a shooting or a hit and run, we have to be a little bit more careful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. And um Chief, I know that that your folks uh often put out communications on the this issue. It might be useful to share some of those with Alders if they want to include them in their blogs.
Yes, ma'am. We're we're working on a flyer, and um we'll we'll get that to everyone once we start our um 2022 campaign. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Alder Harington McKinney, questions for the chief?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, thank you, Chief, for your report. Um, I have two questions. One, um, uh, what number report is this? I mean, uh,
This was quarter four.
This is what?
Uh, quarter four, October through December, I believe.
October through December. And the detailed in the report and some of the questions that the prior alder had, do you go back and be in incorporate those questions into the report that comes out of these sessions? How do you how do you handle those?
Yeah, I I had not um done that. It was my understanding when I got here that that what was at what was listed in the report was what council asked for. And and I know that um I think Alder Heck and I had a conversation about um creating um a more aggregate report. I don't have a problem with that. I think maybe we would need to kind of sit down so that everyone had their input. Because what I would not want to do is leave something out that an alder is 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 interested in or add something that I feel like uh everyone should know. So if if the report needs uh further uh details or further um numbers, I think we can do that. I just want to make sure that we can do that at once so that uh every quarter I'm not adding additional information.
Okay, final question is, is that um the um the report that you gave tonight, is that the same report that you give to the Public Safety Review Committee, or is it scaled down? Or uh, could you say something about that?
It's it's the same report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That completes my question.
Thank you, Alder. Um, and again, a a suggestion here that perhaps uh when the council has a new chief of staff, that person could facilitate input into the format of the report uh for the future. Are there any additional questions for the chief? All right, if not, uh, the motion uh is to accept the report. Alder Figaro Cole?
So can I just I just want to make a a quick comment. So I I want to thank the council for putting up with all my questions. But um, I I we've been getting that reported reporter. I've been skimming through it, and this time I really stopped to take a look good look at it. And like, we just heard from um prior speakers. I I think it is a maybe we're in a time where we need to kind of revise what the mandate was and try to understand what um, what is it that we need today? Because this is is great that we get this data, but time has changed, and we should probably make this data more focused on the priorities that the department is working on and and to reflect the city's needs at this time. So that's really part of the of the questioning there, just to call attention to some of the issues that we are seeing that we're seeing today. Um, I'm sorry to have taken all of your time. I appreciate the chief um having um been prepared to answer all those questions in public. And I definitely will continue to work with him and whoever else wants to work on um like Alder Heck to make sure that that report gets fine tuned and 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 it's easier to read. Because that data not only is presented here, it's presented at the at the Public Safety Committee, and if I'm not mistaken, it's also loaded on the MPD website. So it goes to the public. And we just want to make sure that that we all speak in the same language when it comes to data. So again, I'm sorry I took so much of your time. And thank you. Thank you again, Chief, for the information. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. The motion uh is to accept the report or receive the report. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that report is received. And we will go on to item twenty six, uh, which is Legisstar six eight five seven five, a resolution to authorize a non-competitive contract with Huff Core Incorporated as a sole source provider of airwales slash movable partition systems. Um, on item twenty six, we have one registrant Gregory Gabowski from Middleton in opposition wishing to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, a couple of things. Um, I I know it's in generals, there's a lot of uh on this, on the county, uh, Middleton, uh, maybe not so much. Uh, just a lot of these things where um there are on bid contracts that are kind of passed through. Um, I remember a time when that was just that was unthinkable, um, just about anywhere, but it seems to be this common thing now. I just want to have people um think about that. But on this particular one, um, Huff Core, um, currently located in Janesville, um, but soon not. They've been bought for four years. They've been owned by a uh uh private equity firm that um this year announced that they were going to be shutting down their union plant. Uh, they're going to be getting rid of their union jobs in Janesville and transferring them all to Monterrey, Mexico, uh, where there's lower wages. Um, I'm wondering what uh, and there's a there's a question here. I'm wondering what, you know, decision-making process was in here to just uh pass this um this contract through. Um, why no consideration was given to the um, you know, what this company is uh is doing? And um what uh, what what kind of um what you have in place in the city to check for these kind of things um among your um, among people bidding for contracts? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have no other registrants on this item. Are there any questions for the red registrant? All right, seeing none. Uh, on item twenty six then, President Abash, a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Uh, is there a second?
Second, second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to adopt item twenty six. Um, we'll start with questions for staff. Alder Harington McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, um, I was not able to um to 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 really look at this um item, and it says a um as a sole source provider. And normally there is, and it probably is attached to it, I just didn't pull it up. Could the um could staff speak on why it was a sole source um provider? And keep in mind that I couldn't pull it up to see uh the contents of the of the document behind this item.
Uh, thank you, Alder Harington McKinney. We did have legisstar issues earlier today. I believe they are resolved. But um I'll look to uh either Madona Terrace staff or finance staff to speak to this.
Uh, oh, Connie's here.
I can speak to it.
Go ahead, Connie.
Yep, we're just replacing the walls. We're not placing the track. Um, so we can't, um, if we were replacing the entire system, then we could go out to bid and get um, uh, hopefully a a competitive bid between a couple of different providers. Um, by replacing the walls, no other wall is going to fit into a track from a different company. So we're um limited in what we were able to do.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. And we'll move on to item forty four, uh, which is the report of the Public Safety Review Committee, uh, Legisstar six eight six two five, implementing a body worn camera pilot program. On item forty four, we have a number of registrants uh, starting with Greg Jones of Fitchburg in support uh representing the Dane County NAACP, to be followed by Alex Chabotz.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Council and Mayor and representatives of uh the city. So I do want to thank you for the time and opportunity. But let me get to the matter of fact here. NAACP supports the pilot project for body worn cameras. But I always like to do a moment of reflection. And I want to talk a bit about the history of this process and a little bit about the data that I think supports the need for body worn cameras. Let me begin by, in April of 2020, the Madison Common Council created a six-member review committee to look at the feasibility of implementing body worn cameras. In January of 2021, the feasibility committee formally recommended using the pilot program before implementing body worn cameras citywide. But in March, the Public Safety Review Committee voted against it. Since then, it has been hanging in limbo. I want to just take a look at what seems to be the primary role of a visual uh of visual occurrences between individuals in the community and our law enforcement representatives. Now, I want to speak specifically to data that's already on file by the Madison Police Department Accountability Report for 2020 and the Madison Police Department Annual Report for 2020. This is what the data shows and say to me. I'm going to pick a few of these events to talk about interactions. Number one, assault offenses. In that year, there were three hundred and eighty-three assault offenses for white folk, six hundred and forty-eight for black folk, and ninety-four Hispanics. In that same year, the drug narcotic offenses, three hundred and sixty for white, two hundred and seventy-two for black, and forty-three for Hispanic. Larceny theft offenses, three hundred and two for whites, three hundred and thirteen for blacks, twenty-six for Hispanics. Body worn cameras can lead to faster resolution of citizen complaints and lawsuits that are led to excessive use of force and other forms of officer misconduct. Think about these interactions, how many there were, what types there were. Another area that I think is supportive of taking a hard look and a clear decision on this matter is disorderly conduct. In that year, there were eight hundred and fourteen disorderly conducts for whites, one thousand sixty-nine for blacks, hundred and forty-three for Hispanics. Traffic citations, three thousand seven hundred thirty-six for whites, two thousand seventy-seven for blacks, four hundred and eighty-eight for Hispanics. Let it be known that the body worn camera can produce information that will be used in evidentiary findings, investigation, that can be useful, and that can save resources. Lastly, let's talk about use of force, not deadly force, but just use of force. In Madison, in that year, there were one hundred and seventy takedowns of decentralization. That is an actual use of force. To see that information firsthand is critical. So let us remember, and let me conclude by saying, body worn cameras would benefit not only the public, but also the police department. Let this relationship between communities of color, men and women in our police departments, work positively, not negatively. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next tradition is Alex Chabaz of District Fourteen in Opposition, representing Sweet Water Liberation Lab, to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
There, there's no one by that name in the list. Tyson is here.
Then Tyson Vitale of District Fourteen in Opposition, to be followed by Jesse Ransom.
Tyson, you should have a prompt to unmute. Again, Tyson, you should have a prompt to unmute.
Let's um go on, and we'll come back to Tyson. Uh, so Jesse Ransom of Middleton in Opposition, to be followed by Fabio Mora Arieta.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, so uh, the complaint says the the body camera is, it's kind of going back and forth, but realistically, you have to look at the whole system. Um, so if you look up how to file complaint first MPD, so within its first few paragraphs, the complaint form procedure says, whoever makes a false complaint regarding the conduct of a law enforcement officer is subject to a class A forfeiture. The fine is ten thousand dollars. The fine is $10,000 and failure to pay is means for a warrant for your arrest and suspension of your driving privileges. So the police department is evaluating themselves and determining whether your complaint is false or true. And by that, they can literally lock you up for it. If you refuse to pay that 10 grand. Does threatening the public with imprisonment for a complaint that the police department deems is false or true sound like welcoming criticism or being open? Imagine if Target said, you can file a complaint, but if Target employees feel that complaint isn't valid, we can lock you in our basement for 90 days and charge you $10,000. Would that be considered open to criticism? Is that a good way to run a complaint system? And would Target employees wearing body cameras help that situation? The problem is the police will use the body cameras to exonerate themselves while using cameras against the public. Without being open and having an easy way to access that camera system, that means nothing. It's just a waste of millions of dollars for us. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Fabio Mora Arieta of District 12, in opposition to be followed by Alexandra Wilburn.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time and your work over here. It is interesting to hear the statistics from one side and the other, and I appreciate those spaces where we can talk about those type of issues. And definitely data helps drive decisions. However, the reality in this country of what's happening, of from murder to violence to, here in Wisconsin, we have a kid from high school being murdered and the police still working. That was recorded on camera. The video wasn't available right away. Kenosha, Kenosha case, it is hard to argue with only numbers like this or examples like this, but Michelle Alexander, in her book, The New Jim Crow, show how those ideas continue being used to perpetrate racism. And when you go a little bit deeper to question this, is that correct that this is going to be deployed in a rich neighborhood or in a poor neighborhood first? And then you can start learning how this is a tactic that is not going to be deployed in a Maple Bluff-like neighborhood? This is going to be deployed where the Latinos live, where the African Americans live. And we're going to continue the cycle of, we believe that being poor is a crime. We don't go after a crime being perpetrated by wealthy people. We just continue following the idea that being poor is a crime, therefore I'm going to police more, therefore I'm going to criminalize more. And now trying to connect the dots, the police officer before, we're speaking of how bad are them at stopping crime and asking for more money and more funds? And looks like happily, we just give them more. Well, they confirm that they are very bad at it. So what I'm trying to say is like, can we push pause for a second and stop putting more money into this? And just think, can we use that money to prevent crime rather than record it? Because many times, is the actual person holding the camera perpetrating the crime?
That's your time, if you could wrap up, please.
Hey, sorry, no, I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Alexandra Wilburn of District 2, to be followed by Bill Anderson.
There, there's no one by that name in the list, Bill is here.
All right, then, Bill Anderson of District 3, to be followed by Mia Masak.
Hi, I'm speaking against the body camera proposal. I don't have any of these studies offhand, but I, and I'm sure that there's going to be some people that come after me that have a lot more detailed technical information about this. But the essence of it is that body cameras are really not, I mean, are not useful as a means for holding police accountable. And the reason for this is that we already know what police do. We have tons of evidence of it. You know, there's been so many officers have been caught on video, you know, murdering people, doing other things. And there's just hasn't been accountability in those cases. I mean, we had our chief of police here in Madison, Mike Colwell, threaten the city council. He did all sorts of, you know, he was an ill-tempered chief of police. And yet somehow, this city council failed to hold him accountable. And this was all in the papers, it was all on video. You know, I just don't see how investing more money into what is essentially surveillance technology to survey people, to survey communities that are already over policed, is going to result in any kind of accountability for our police department. I am quite frankly ashamed to be a resident of the city right now and that we just put $84 million into this bloated budget of a police department. We need to be investing this money in helping people. Police departments are reactionary, they react to problems. And, you know, like, we can do better than this. We should be doing better than this. And with that, I'm going to yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mia Masak of District 6, to be followed by Joe Ballas.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. All right, great, thanks. Grateful for this time. You know, it's a new year and it's the same conversation. As the final decision is being considered, there are questions that still haven't been answered. First and foremost, what did captured dash cam footage do for Tony Terrell Robinson Jr. almost seven years ago? Despite undeniable proof of wrongdoing on behalf of Officer Matt Kenny, Tony died and Kenny walked. So please don't insult our intelligence by claiming this program is in civilians' best interest when in fact, what we need is to indict, convict, and fire the killer cops on the force. How can we hemorrhage more money into things like this while negating actual needs throughout our community? What good is this technology when it's likely to be used as a weapon against us as opposed to a means of service and protection? I recently crossed paths with a young black man who was being harassed by police. He became frustrated and told the officers, not in the nicest way, but freedom of speech, right? To leave him alone. There was no threat of violence and dude was walking away in effort to deescalate and leave the situation. But suddenly, a cop jumped out of the squad car and proceeded to slam this individual against it. No words were exchanged as to why, nor any charges mentioned, so I began recording. They threatened to arrest him, so I asked them why. Because the only one who broke a law here, as far as I could tell, was the individual with the badge. I asked for their numbers and demanded his Miranda rights be read, to which they replied, we don't have to. Some would judge the situation and condemn me for sticking my nose where it doesn't belong. But to those of us who consciously understand what's truly going on, we know this intervention very well may have saved this young man's life. After a few reminders that there were eyes on them, the cops finally let this person go. But my fear is what I saw with my own eyes, what happens that we don't see? And we're just supposed to operate on the lack in honor system, trusting that police captured footage won't be tampered with or conveniently edited? We just caught one up in inappropriate conduct sex in a squad car, yet ultimately, no one saw anything wrong with that, is just one example. But we should put our faith in this leadership? Catch us naked, I promise we'd be in jail. Let us shoot an armed child seven times in less than 30 seconds when our job was to help him, we'd rot away in prison. And in that instance, we probably should. The lack in accountability is disgusting. We don't need any more tools to be used against us. What we need is policing of the police. And regardless of what is decided tonight, we know that Mr. Floyd's murderer was only sentenced because there was footage, not from police, but the people.
That's time.
If you could wrap up, please.
Okay. So I would just wrap up by saying that that's on the beginning of justice being served. And I would request that you either follow the reasonable body cam committee measures or dismiss this resolution as it stands in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Joe Ballas, with a P O Box in Madison, and representing the Madison Community Policing Foundation, to be followed by Isidore Knox Jr.
Good evening, Mayor. Joe Ballas, City Madison, District 7 resident, retired captain from the Madison Police Department. I'm also co-founder and current chair of the Madison Community Policing Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit tax-exempt public charity was created by myself and four other retired MPD officers shortly after my retirement in 2016. MCPF's primary goals are to support both financially with volunteers, the community policing efforts of local police, especially the Madison Police Department, honor the men and women serving in our communities today and in the past. And lastly, but most importantly, grow the relationship between police and community through any and all means possible. We've raised over $300,000 in the last five years and do $50,000 in support back to MPD each year. On behalf of our current and legacy MCPF board members, all of whom are retired MPD personnel, we strongly urge you, Mayor, and the Madison Common Council to support Police Chief Barnes and today's MPD in approving, advancing the long debated and studied body worn camera pilot project. In the early 2000s, 20 years before today's generation of progressive Madison public policy thinkers, there was another group of progressive thinkers and leaders that helped put the Madison Police Department on the map and at the forefront in the United States in the adoption and implementation of digital video and audio recording technology in policing. From 2000 to 2006, I served as a lieutenant in the MPD in a technology role. At that time, I played a significant part in my assignment over seven years to help procure federal grant dollars from the United States Justice Department to implement many technology projects. Each year, at the chief's discretion, I worked closely with staff from U.S. Senator Herb's Cold's office as we earmark cops' technology bills going through the U.S. Senate Judiciary Committee, directing millions of dollars back to Madison and Dane County to support these projects. In fiscal year 2003, we obtained a $2 million cops' technology grant, $1 million which went to the purchase of over 80 digital in-car video and audio systems for the Madison Police Department and the Dane County Sheriff's Office. We also purchased multiple terabyte servers, which served as the foundation to store the digital data and created new record retention procedures and standard operating procedures. 20 years ago, accountability and transparency was the primary motive and reason why we implemented digital in-car video and audio technology in Madison police cars. When you stop to think about it for a minute, MPD has actually been doing a pilot project in the recording of video and audio police contacts for 20 years. Body worn cameras, quite frankly, are really nothing more than an extension of what MPD has already been doing for many years. We urge the mayor and the common council tonight, or in the near future, to support Chief Barnes and the MPD's request to move this project forward as we believe the current and ongoing debate has been studied, the pros and cons are out there, and we simply need to end the discussion and finally get this project implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Isidore Knox Jr. of District 14, to be followed by Gisela Wilson.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this subject. I've been listening to some of the speakers tonight. And just a few points that I'd like to make is, one, it's not definitive that cameras prevent violence. It's not definitive that cameras are deterrent to police misconduct. And it's not definitive that cameras prevent crime. But one thing we do know cameras do is they actually show what's, what happens. It tells a story. And that's a tool that we all can use to get closer to the truth and possibly justice and help solve crimes. Some of the other speakers have provided the data. Some of the other speakers have talked about, we've studied this issue. And it's time for this council to act. We have the information we need to start a pilot. And then we'll get more data to know how effective this tool is. Like Joe Ballas just spoke on, we already have camera surveillance out here. This is just an additional tool to get to the truth, to what's actually happening out here. And we can certainly use it to benefit people. And at the minimum, make sure that we have justice out here. You know, in traditional Madison style, we will debate an issue for an eternity before we make a decision. We've had that debate. We've talked about the data. It's now time to act. Let's get on with the pilot so that we can learn what we need to learn to be more effective in providing public safety for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gisela Wilson of District 6, to be followed by Benji Ramirez Gomez.
There, there's no one by that name in the queue, Benji is here.
All right, then, Benji Ramirez Gomez of District 6, to be followed by Gregory Glombiak.
Hi there. Wow, great to see that the new maps have rolled out and I'm now in District 6. I would like to remind the council that the PSRC has recommended to put this resolution on file. And that decision was made on the grounds that the pre-work, all of the infrastructure to make sure that the outcomes, the desired outcome of a body cam pilot program would be attainable have not been attained. We have not put in place the oversight, nor any of the policy that actually dictates how this video surveillance is going to be used. The committee has recommended that we place this on file until that pre-work has been done. And now, if any of the sponsors of this original resolution would care to follow through with this work instead of doing the dirty work of MPD, then we'd be having a different conversation. But this, this right here is the problem. We've got the police union, we've got whatever the speaker before us was, who was out here donating millions of dollars to a violent institution. And we've got this whole entire system that is meant to back this inherently violent system, the system that continues to kill people, the system that continues to separate families, the system that doesn't want to see black and brown joy. And so I asked the council, place this on file. Be brave, recognize that the work has not been done. Recognize that this conversation has been going on because there are people burning themselves out to keep the people that they care and love about safe. Police do not keep us safe. We keep us safe. And so the community continues to come out in troves. They continue to sit through their siblings' birthdays. They continue to call and implore of a council that won't even allow us to show our face to you. We are nothing more than a blank face and a trembling voice to y'all. So please, place this on file and let's do the work. Let's actually figure out what public safety means in the midst of a pandemic, when the federal government will give us four rapid tests per household. We could use this money in a gamut of ways, but the imagination is not there, right? Because we are still beholden to this powerful institution that originated from slavery.
That's time.
Thank you. You could wrap up, please.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Glombiak of District Six, to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Am I, am I audible?
You are.
This week I was corresponding with Michelle Alexander, author of The New Jim Crow. She wrote to me about the difficulty of, quote, getting people to face the facts about body cameras and what is truly necessary to end police violence, end quote. As she has said, quote, "Body cameras are not a solution. This is another tool of surveillance for poor communities and communities of color," end quote. Jennifer Doleak is the director of the Justice Tech Lab at Texas A and M University. The mission of the Justice Tech Lab is to find effective solutions for criminal justice problems. Doleak has reviewed body cam research in depth and writes, quote, "Body cameras don't make police more accountable," end quote. Cynthia Lam is the director of George Mason University Center for Evidence-Based Crime Policy. In a review, she, she writes, quote, "The inability of B W Cs to impact accountability structures may already be seen in the findings that cameras are primarily used by police and prosecutors to increase the accountability of citizens, not officers," end quote. Lam is the lead author of the most recent peer-reviewed meta-analysis of body cam research. That analysis concludes, quote, "B W Cs have not had statistically significant or consistent effects on most measures of officer and citizen behavior or citizens view of police. Because B W Cs do not seem to impact officer or citizen behaviors as measured by researchers in the ways initially hoped for," end quote. In general, body cam studies that assert substantial benefits tend to have deep flaws. For example, they don't meet conventional criteria for statistical significance. There are major flaws in methodology. They're preliminary and likely would not pass peer review, et cetera. Body cam harms and costs outweigh benefits. Importantly, the current resolution contradicts all the recommendations of the Body Cam Committee Report and Equal Opportunities Commission. The Body Cam Committee Report specified ten strict preconditions that have to be fulfilled for body cams to be implemented. For example, can a pilot be a randomized control trial, which is, this is not. Without using a randomized control trial, no valid conclusions can be drawn, including for metrics like charging rate. The Body Cam Committee Report says has to be generated by the pilot. And there isn't appropriate funding to administer a randomized control trial. And none of the other preconditions are in place, making it impossible to determine whether any conclusions from a pilot would hold with full deployment. For example, the policies specified in the report have not been agreed to by M P D. The D A has not agreed to the required conditions. There actually have been no negotiations with the D A's office yet, et cetera. None of the preparatory work to fulfill the preconditions has even been started. This resolution is completely premature and has not been thought through. The report states, quote, "If the city, M P D, and the D A's office fail to fulfill these preconditions, then the committee unanimously agrees that B W Cs should not be implemented in Madison," end quote. I think a body cam program should not be initiated here, but if it is, it should follow the recommendations of the report, which are designed to at least partially ameliorate harms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of District Two, to be followed by Erica Bach.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, so I am aware, uh, through the blog that this is, uh, going to be referred to the next council meeting, and it is time to put a stop. Accountability comes before cameras. We have over and over as activists, Organizations for Equity, Racial, and Social Justice oppose this implementation of body camera. And most specifically, recently, in the last couple of years, where data continues to show and research that this equipment and technology does everything to oppress the communities that are already disproportionately affected by this system that you continue to side with. You're not siding with black and brown communities, not with the undocumented community, who is at one of the highest risk of this technology. They, it, it is the highest, uh, risk and dangerous. This footage can be shared with federal immigration agencies like ICE to target and arrest our community members. For a long time, we had capturing videos, so many, so many of this incident of violence against people in this country, but especially involves people of color, like George Floyd. And it was not the body camera that convicted Derek Chauvin. He was fired by the Manapolis Police Department on May twenty sixth. George Floyd was killed on, on May twenty fifth. He was arrested on May twenty nine, in May twenty ninth. The footage would have not even come out if we, in many, many months, if, if it wasn't because we have that technology in our hands already. We continue to provide this footage of police brutality, and we still don't see the justice. We had the footage of the murder of Tony Robinson, and there's still no justice. Cameras cannot come before accountability. The ninety day, uh, pilot program, it is not better than, uh, the KRS program, who, the KRS program has, it has been said that the KRS program doesn't have enough time, uh, to, uh, come to a conclusion and review the data to see if it works. So why a ninety day pilot program will be any different? Please follow the Public Safety Review Committee recommendation to file this right now. We don't need to be stressing anymore about something before we, we bring justice to those that are already not here, like Tony Robinson. And those who continue to go through police brutality and the lack of protection of our Madison Police Department. Survivors are domestic violence, families being separated illegally, violation, violations of constitutional rights being done. We need to fund the oversight, the community oversight to the police.
And that's time.
If you could wrap up, please.
Nobody cameras, please follow the Public Safety Review Committee, um, recommendation to file. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Erica Bach of District Seven, to be followed by Ernestine Moss.
Yeah, there's no one by that name in the list. Um, Ernestine Moss is here.
Then Ernestine Moss of District Eighteen, to be followed by Bob Schaefer.
See, you're, okay. You are unmuted. Yes.
I, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of, of, um, the bo, uh, body worn cameras. I believe that it is a additional tool for the police. Yes, I mean, much of what some people have said is true. Not all, every case where you have a body camera is a case where you're gonna get justice. That doesn't negate the fact that in some cases, they are very helpful because you can see what the police are doing and you can see what the, the accused are doing. And I believe that to have that additional information is helpful. And it can be helpful not only to the police, but to the person who is being accosted as well. So I don't believe that leaving this unattended to, uh, putting it in a file is gonna be helpful toward getting justice for many black and brown individuals. And so while it is not a in all be all, it is an extra tool that people can use, that the police has at its disposal to help sort out what the truth is and what actually happened in a, any particular si- situation. So I'm hoping that the council will be supportive of the chief and take this issue up and put it to rest once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bob Schaefer of District Seventeen, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe.
Bobby should have a prompt. There you go.
Yes, uh, Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to, um, have some input here, uh, that the, uh, majority of police officers that I have encountered are looking at the body camera as a, uh, something that also provides them with a history of what went down. They have a lot of different things that they encounter through their shift, and they have to do a report. So the body camera helps to, uh, provide that review. In addition, it's, it's a tool that they find is essential in terms of, uh, questionable situations that may occur, rather than a he said, she said, uh, thing they've got, uh, some actual documentation of what happened. It, it is also something that is going to hold the off, officer accountable for their actions and can be used in the future for training, uh, purposes and also for officer evaluation. That there are many uses and that, uh, the officers and the police chief have looked at this as being a useful tool to them. And that, in my experience of using tools, that I, I find that it was more important for me to determine the, the tool that I needed, rather than have somebody else determine that. So I'm just suggesting that we can put this to a rest, get it test run going here. Let's find out if some of the concerns that people have are valid, or let's find out whether the tool provides a better Madison Police Department. This has been bounced around for, um, years, and let's bite the bullet. Let's, uh, get it in action. Let's get it proud going. And, and let's see what the results are. If the results prove that, uh, they are not productive to the community, then we end it. If the results prove that this is very helpful, it helps to provide a better accountability, it helps to provide more solid base for, uh, when a person is arrested, uh, and that it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. So I think that, um, all of you are probably using various tools within your job. And you probably wouldn't want other people making decisions about the tools that you use. Please listen to the people that we are calling for to help keep our communities safe. That today, with all the, uh, car thefts, with all the shots fired and other things like that that are going on, that the city of Madison Police Department has to deal with.
And that's time.
To deal with those.
If you could wrap up, please.
Yes. Please approve and move this forward so that we have actual data to go on in making few different decisions.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of District Eleven.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would just like to, um, show my support once again for the body worn camera pilot project. Um, I attended all of the meetings of the Police Body Worn Camera Feasibility Review Committee as they were writing the report and the model policy. And as I'm sure you're aware, that committee voted five to one to recommend body worn cameras. I also attended the Public Safety Review Committee meeting, um, when it was voted to file it, basically put it in the trash bin. And I really don't think it's fair to put this in the trash bin after all of the research, time, work, study that went into this by Keith Finley and that whole committee. I'd love it if all of you could hear from Tom Brown, the defense that he had of body worn cameras growing up, um, as a black man and the benefits that those cameras had, um, in his opinion. And I would love it if we would look at the communities around us, knowing that many of them, most of them, equip their police officers with body worn cameras, as well as most major cities and over seventy percent of police departments in the United States. It seems like this is a best practice. We've heard Chief Barnes say that over and over. This is a tool of twenty first century policing. And I think we owe it to the citizens of our community to try this pilot, analyze all the information and decide if this is a good step for us to take as a city or not for the benefit of all of our residents. Thank you for your time, and I do hope that you will vote to approve this pilot.
Thank you. Let's circle back and see if we have any of the folks that we missed, starting with Alex Shabazz of District Fourteen.
Hello?
Yeah, uh, no, that's Alexander Wilburn, but we'll take you, District Two. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I would, um, am, I have emailed the council, the all alders, a longer version of what I'm going to say. Um, has lots of people on the call know I can ramble. I'd say that we need genuine systems of accountability. And without that, you know, without an independent monitor, without a fully funded and fully supported from the, this council, from, uh, other institutions of power for the P C O B, that we're doing a disservice, uh, to, to our community. Um, I'd like to echo, uh, that we need justice for Tony Robinson still. Um, and I encourage everyone, um, on this call to email District Attorney Ishmael Ozan and tell him to resign or never run for election again because, uh, he is one of the people that we don't trust in the community because.
If you could stick to the body worn cameras, please.
Oh, stick to the body worn cameras? Okay, um, well, in the hands of District Attorney Ishmael Ozan, body camera footage, um, even if it shows police misconduct, may not result in any sort of accountability. Um, so let's, instead of implementing new technology, implement a better system of accountability before we bring this to the floor again. Um, we need an independent monitor, um, and a fully supported P C O B before we consider this technology again. Um, justice for Tony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now let's try again for Alex Shabazz of District Fourteen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hey, uh, council, um, y'all know me, Alex Shabazz. Um, I just wanna say that I find it completely despicable that in the middle of a global pandemic, we, as a community, are considering spending any amount of money on a program that's not only not essential, but actually gonna cause more harm to black residents. And y'all know this, you know this, right? We've been saying this since Mike Brown was killed, okay? Um, so let's stop pretending and quit acting like this is about accountability. Y'all gonna quit playing in our faces. It's not about accountability, and you know it's not. The police don't want accountability for what they do. If they did, the police would, the M P D would have been remove Matt Kenny from their ranks, okay? Removed his badge and charged him with murder, okay? But instead, we're sitting here debating, again, the humanity of black folks. If you vote for this, if you vote to put this resolution through, don't say that you are for black people, don't say that you are for justice, don't say that you are for change, don't say that you are for accountability. Just say you are about police control, because that's what M P D is about. Control, period. You can no longer trick us or gaslight us with your lies about wanting to end police brutality. We know that's a lie. If you wanted to end police brutality, you would give organizers what they wanted when Tony Robinson was first killed in twenty, twenty fifteen, okay? Let me remind you of the demands. We wanted Matt Kenny fired. We wanted reparations to be given to Tony Robinson's family. And we wanted a community control board that had the power to hire and fire police and the power to create policies and practices. Now, I've seen, I've seen efforts be made to completely circumvent the power of this, of the, um, community oversight body, right? To make it not have any weight. So don't act like you want accountability. Say that you're for dominance and control, because that's what this is. We can't trust the current structures, and that's why we need complete community control. We cannot trust these processes. We can't trust y'all to keep our community safe. We have to do it ourselves. And what a shame that is. And so if you vote for this resolution, don't, don't pretend, okay? Just say what you are about upfront, okay? If you're for justice, then you vote against, um, you will vote against police cameras, body cameras, you will vote against continuing to put money in a system that seeks to control poor people, period. You had, um, the person, Joe Baez, um, talked about this program will be ex, of, of what the police have already been doing. That's exactly what we're saying. And what have the police already been doing? Being, um, brutal to people, arresting people, criminalizing people, dehumanizing people for no reason. The, the fact that there's a body that has an interest, has an invested interest in their being crime, that should say all that we need.
If you could wrap up, please. Thank you. Uh, all right, now let's try for Tyson. Uh, all right, now let's try for Tyson Vitale of District Fourteen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for circling back. I apologize. I may or may not have honestly bumped the computer earlier when you called on me, so. Uh, thank you. I am against this item of implementing a pilot program for body cams, the specific resolution. Um, I would encourage everyone to please place on file. Uh, the reasons I think that you should are because uh it's not well thought out and I don't think it's a good resolution. Uh, first, people are right that have been talking about this having been talked about for quite some time. And there's a reason for that. Um, I think it's a good reason and we need to move forward on prioritizing making sure that we are framing the issues uh that we are talking about uh that impact the most marginalized are, we are framing our issues uh and moving forward with any policy that the city is gonna consider uh framed with what impacts and affects our most marginalized communities or the most marginalized for the specific issue. We know with body cameras that, uh, you know, black folks and other marginalized populations in our community are going to be most affected. Uh, if you look at the report that was uh brought together by the Ad Hoc Committee to see the feasibility of body cams, uh, they recommend multiple different things to try to rectify the possible unintended consequences that can lead to um negative things happening to our most marginalized populations already, even when we already have horrible disparities. Um, those recommendations are not even considered within this resolution. Um, they're not required um or need to be a part of the pilot program or even moving forward with body cams. Uh, the other confusing thing that I also don't understand about this resolution in and of itself is why it is an operating budget amendment. Uh, I, I think that this should be an operating budget amendment. We should be honest with the cost of what these type of programs will, you know, have our city and our taxpayers paying for. Uh, so that's another confusion on this resolution that I would like to see, you know, rectified if we even are thinking about moving forward. Uh, and because of that, along with many other issues, um, I, I don't think that uh this specific resolution uh is worthy of moving forward and I would ask you to place on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gisla Wilson of District Six.
Uh, mayor, I did not see that person in the list.
All right, how about Erica Bach of District Seven?
Nope.
All right, then how about uh Monica Howard of District Twenty?
You are unmuted, Monica.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, I just would like to say that for the body cams, this really shuts down our city for racism. I do wanna say that. Um, when body cams are worn and best practices are always a vital part of evidence-based policing, this is why we hired a new chief to move the department forward. The evidence on the benefits of body cameras are better than the COVID vaccine. And yet the city encourages us to be vaccinated. The truth is simple. Body cameras hold everyone accountable, not just the police, and that is the real issue. And so I would argue that and I would say I'm in favor of body cams. And as a citizen that lives on the West Side, I think this is very important. There's danger levels, there's high crime. And the fact that the police wanna be held accountable and have body cams, I think the city needs to reconsider their options. Because in all truth be told, you can't obviously prove against racism or for racism when you got body cams that has visual and audio and it's not gonna cost the city anything for ninety days. We really won't get charged for this and taxpayers won't either. And that kinda negates the arguments that are before the table.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kim Richmond of District Sixteen.
Thank you and good evening. Um, I'm hearing the same old arguments uh in, in opposition and, and they're getting old. It's the same old, same old, same old. Um, body cameras are, are the best practice for modern policing. As others have mentioned, it's um, it's helpful on both sides of the, of the cameras. If you go across the county, and I did my own, my own calling, almost every community in and around Madison has body worn cameras. They're happy with them. The communities are happy with them. The people are happy with them and the police are happy with them. Um, the other night at the uh public, I'm sorry, yeah, the Public Safety meeting, I was cut off. And I had mentioned the black uh leaders of color, or I'm sorry, the black leaders in Madison that support body cameras and there are fifteen or sixteen of them. Um, I do not have that with me at this time, but they range from CEOs to alders to um pastors, to organi- to police chiefs, the sheriff. And I was questioned as why, or I was questioned that that was being monolithic. Well, this proves that it's not monolithic. Some are for it, some are against it. But when I am told by an alder that there are no um black leaders in support of these, that was just a flat out lie. That was a flat out lie and I have it in quotes. So um enough's enough. Let's get forward with this program. It's just a pilot. Let's give it a chance. We give all pilots a chance. Let's give this one a chance. Um, good evening and thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gloria Reyes of District Seventeen.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am in support of implementing, uh, the implementation of the body worn video pilot. We have been discussing this topic for the past six years or even longer, starting while I was serving as a deputy mayor when we established the initial body worn video committee where we hired the YWCA and Jackie Voges, who conducted extensive community engagement from diverse communities. And they essentially decided that we need to dig deeper within the police department and agreed that body worn camera was not a panacea to deal with the challenges in policing. In response, we developed the MPD Ad Hoc uh Policy and Procedure Review Committee and invested in a consultant to review the police department. And again, body cameras came up and more engagement with many people of color who are most impacted by police support body worn video. We have spent significant amount of uh efforts, expense on deciding and uh on whether to implement body worn cameras. We've done our due diligence. The OIR report highlighted guidance on the use of body cameras. I serve on the United Way Law Enforcement Leaders of Color Collaboration who voted in support of the pilot. This is a committee that is composed of diverse groups of the community, community members who represent marginalized communities. We have done our due diligence in our process and engagement with those who are most impacted by police interactions. This is a great opportunity for us to try body worn cameras through this pilot and work out any issues or technical uh challenges, budget and review policies. We all understand this, this is not a panacea, but it is a tool. It is disappointing to me that we talk about police brutality and excessive use of force. And here we have a tool. We are so quick to take our own phone cameras out to capture interactions with police, but we say that we don't want cameras, but yet we are, we are concerned with privacy issues. We currently see people recording on Facebook Live with their own phone cameras uh and, and display privacy issues, people exhibiting mental health issues and they're ta- they're using their own cameras. But yet we don't want body cameras on police officers where we can actually monitor and provide policies and restrictions on how we use the footage. As a government body, you are responsible to utilize any tools we have to use for training, accountability, transparency and to ensure safety of our most marginalized communities. I urge this committee to recommend this pilot program to the, to council for implementation. Um, and we have to move forward. We've done our due diligence as a community. Uh, we have heard from people. We have many black and brown people in our community who are most impacted by, by uh police.
And that's time.
The time to implement. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our final registrant. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to re refer to April nineteenth common council meeting.
Uh, can I get a second on that? I think Vice President Martin may be reconnecting. Other cop, Lynn will second. Uh, the motion is to re refer to the April, sorry, President Abbas, the date again.
Nineteenth.
The April nineteenth common council meeting. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re referral? Seeing no objection, the item is re referred to the April nineteenth council meeting. Uh, we now have a number of uh introductions and referrals from the floor. We will start uh with Legislative File six nine three five four, which is approving the scope of services for the Cooperative Enterprise Development Program and authorizing a contract with C four CS. Uh, Alder Evers, do you wanna make the motion uh to introduce and refer?
Uh, yes, moved to introduce and refer to finance on January twenty fourth and back to common council on February first.
Second.
Uh, so it's moved and seconded to uh introduce and refer. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced and referred. Our next item is Legislative File six nine three five eight authorizing a contract with Wisconsin Women's Business Initiative Corporation to administer the Kiva Madison Program, uh, et cetera. Again, Alder Evers?
Yes, uh, moved to refer to the January twenty fourth, uh, introduced from the floor and moved to refer to the January twenty fourth Finance Committee Meeting and back to council on February first.
Second.
Moved in seconded to introduce and refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced and referred. Alder Halverson, do you have an introduction from the floor?
Yes, mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, introduced from the floor, Legisstar six nine three six zero, approval for Imagination Center at Rindell Park Operating Plan as outlined in twenty twenty two Capitol Budget Amendment Number Three. Uh, referral to the Finance Committee, January twenty fourth, back to the council on February first. Uh, Finance Committee for review of the plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to introduce and refer. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that is introduced and referred. There any other items for introduction from the floor? Alder Figaro Cole?
I'm sorry, I, I, that went too fast. So is that plan that I just mentioned already, already routed before?
Nope, it's in, being introduced for the first time tonight.
So shouldn't I go to parks also?
Uh, it will be up on the next council meeting agenda for additional referrals.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, good.
Anything else? If not, Vice President Martin, I believe it is your turn.
Oh, um, uh, move adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection.
No objection, just want to acknowledge uh our common council member, Aldo Vehile, is a board of member for League of Municipality, so congratulations to her for representing Madison.
Thank you, President Abbas. Uh, with that, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.